The other one is the continued.
I'd like to reconvene in open session, a statement by the council president that no votes were taken in executive session. Consider and vote on a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session. Do I have a motion?
Don't move Scott Billhurst.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Marvel aye.
Motion passes, meeting adjourned.
Do you have a motion to adjourn them, the special town council meeting?
Yes, yeah, we already made that.
I make a motion, I know I made it earlier, I make a motion that the Minister of Executive Session be.
We only voted to seal the minutes, I think.
I know we did, but I think I should do it now because I think I jumped the gun when I did it. So I'm gonna make the motion again. I move that we seal the, uh, the minutes of the executive session. Scott Billhurst.
Second.
All in favor?
Marvel aye.
Davis aye.
Moffett aye. Motion passes.
Now we got him, don't we have to make a motion to adjourn that meeting?
Yes, we're gonna make a motion now to close the, um, close the special town council meeting of December fourteenth.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Scott Billhurst aye.
Moffett aye.
I'm sorry for your sing up.
A motion passes, a meeting adjourned.
Bye bye.
I would like to call the seven o'clock, December fourteenth town council workshop agenda to order with a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this moment, I'd like to open a workshop to begin discussions regarding proposed amendments to the zoning district use table to amend permitted uses for solar energy systems throughout the town of Hockington and to possibly change or amend the review and approval procedures for all solar energy systems within the town of Hockington as submitted by Peter Squares Esquire on behalf of his clients, Dr. Thomas and Cynthia Skolko, including but not limited to discussions regarding potential impacts of the photovoltaic solar energy systems ordinance in the farm-based photovoltaic solar energy systems ordinance. For further details on the, um, proposed amendment submitted by Attorney Squares, please visit the town's website and those will be listed. Um, before I hand it off to Attorney Squares, I do, I would just like to read a, uh, a short statement. I would like to thank everyone for being here. My goal of this workshop is for all of us to get a better understanding of what is in front of us regarding the proposed amendment. I have taken the time to study this document and hope that everyone else has had a chance to at least compare the two. I would like everyone to be respectful to each other and I look forward to hearing everyone's input. Thanks again for being part of this. Participation is one of the things that makes this country great and is important to me that we get things right and that we seek participation and input. Ordinances are designed to protect the interest and common good for a community. They can always be improved and be complimented to better serve the community and preserve its way of life. Some members of the planning board and planning department will be in attendance for this workshop and I want to thank them for being here and for their participation in what is an important issue and what everyone who wants to talk about can. This is an informational workshop to get a better understanding of the language and intentions of the proposed amendment before us. Attorney Squares, are you here?
Mr. Council President, can you hear me?
I can, sir.
Uh, I'd like to, uh, thank the council for, um, uh, for having me here tonight and taking the time to review this submission. Uh, I'd also like to thank, uh, Councilman Hurst, um, for sponsoring this, um, this ordinance in our behalf. I know he did that with the caveat that he was only doing so to allow it to go to hearing without endorsing it. Uh, but I appreciate that nonetheless because, um, I'm glad that we have the opportunity to present this to you and discuss it with you, um, um, and the things that we find important in here. Um, so I guess I'd start by introducing you to my clients, Tom and Cynthia Skolko and who they are and why they submitted this, this proposed ordinance. So Tom and Cynthia, uh, they own property in town. Um, they, they live in New York, but they own a lot of property in town. Assessors Platt eight, lots thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, uh, forty-four and a assessors Platt eleven, lot forty-two. Um, these are all lots that are budding, um, and altogether it's about, uh, two hundred and forty-one acres of land. Um, and it's almost entirely undeveloped. Um, there's one small, uh, residence located on one of the pieces of land. Um, but the rest of that is, um, uh, open space and forest space and, and, um, and they're preserving it the same, they're preserving it that way. And as I'm sure the council is aware, there's the last council session, there was a very, um, very hotly debated issue regarding, um, solar proposals in town. Um, and Tom and Cynthia, uh, became interested in that because, um, they were, uh, within the butter radius of a couple of projects. Some of the larger projects in town, I won't mention them by name because it's not aimed at those, this ordinance is not aimed at those projects specifically. Um, but that's how they became involved. Um, they became involved with other concerned citizens. Um, I'd note the Hopkins and Citizens Alliance, they, they have been involved with some of the members of that group. Um, and there was some discussion, uh, prior to this upcoming council term, um, that, that there, there may be a need, uh, to update some of the, some of the, um, areas in the, um, the current solar ordinance, uh, just to address what the Skullcos and the group of people that they were working with in the town saw as concerns. Um, so the Skull was, um, hired my firm, uh, to draft this. Um, and so that's what you have before you tonight. Um, and unless there are any other questions about Tom and Cynthia, I could, uh, jump right into, um, you know, what I see as the important, the, the most important aspects of this ordinance. I'd be happy to then answer any questions you have, uh, about the ordinance. Um, but, but before I delve into that, I just say that, um, I know by statute, there are certain timelines that apply to ordinance applications. I, I'd go right out front and say, we're not looking to rush to have you make a, um, a decision on this. Um, and I'd also say that, um, I, I fully understand that this is gonna be an ongoing discussion uh, with the town and you're gonna have to balance a lot of different interests. Um, and that I have no pride and offer the ship on this, that if you need, if you think there's a change that needs to be made to better suit the town, uh, if you don't like how I drafted something and you, and you think, um, uh, either you don't like the idea I was getting at or I got at it the wrong way. Um, you know, I would encourage the council to engage with it, change it, uh, and make it your own as you see fit. With that being said, um, I'll, I'll quickly go over the, what I see as the, um, the major highlights.
Hey Councilor.
Yes.
Hey Council, this is Council Gary. For the benefit of, for everybody, including the town council, do your clients, I do understand they own land here in Hockton, they own a very big section of it. Do you acknowledge, do they sit on any boards, commissions within the town?
No, no, they do not.
Thank you. Do you have a question Scott?
About the land use table, I asked that now?
Well, no, no, not, and now's not the time, he's going to go over some things, so kind of just save your questions for, for after, thank you.
I'll, I'll be quick on touching on these points because I'm sure that you've all looked at it and, you know, I don't wanna just go over what you've already seen, but I'm sure you have questions, so I'll just, I'll just try to hit some points quickly. What I think is, is the main, uh, gravamen, the, the main point of, of the ordinance, the most important part is that, um, uh, we've designated, uh, a principal use solar farm as, uh, uh, an industrial use appropriate for the manufacturing zone. Um, and the reason we did that is because, um, if you think of a, the current ordinance allows it as a commercial use. Um, and there was, um, a lot of concern about not only placing it on commercial properties, but then rezoning residential properties as commercial. Um, and if you think about commercial uses, they're generally uses that although different from residential uses, they fit in with residential uses. Um, you know, if, if you have a corner store or even a, a supermarket or some other commercial use, there's people going in and out, you need to have houses nearby. Um, and, um, you know, it's, it's appropriate to have residential uses near, um, commercial uses. We really see this as a manufacturing use, um, and you know, just by way of comparison, uh, you wouldn't have a large holding tank, uh, for natural gas, uh, placed near, um, near residences. Um, and, um, even though that's, you may consider that as a, a beneficial fuel for the environment, um, appropriate from a global warming standpoint. Um, if, if you were to have that close to a residential zone, it would hurt the property values and it wouldn't be appropriate for the zone. We see the solar farm as, as the same type of use. Um, it's, it's creating electricity, it's not a use where people come in and out and, and, and make use of that. Um, uh, facilities like you would in a commercial zone. That there have been some precedent, um, in the Rhode Island courts regarding, um, uh, designating solar as a manufacturing use. I wouldn't get into that because really it just comes down to what, what we consider that really it's most important, appropriate for a manufacturing zone which are set out away from, uh, residential uses to an even greater degree than commercial, commercial uses. Uh, the next most important point, um, that, that I consider, um, in this man's draft is that for, uh, solar farms, principal use solar farms, we've designated those as land development projects rather than as, uh, uh, going under a development plan review process. The reason that's important and, and the type of land development project depends on the size, but the reason that it's been, it's important to designate this as a land development project is because, um, there was a lot of debate, I, I would say, in the last council session about what was the appropriate role for the planning board, uh, when rezoning, uh, land to accommodate a solar use, um, and what was the appropriate, uh, role for the council? Um, and maybe, you know, should the council be the, the gatekeeper that, the, the, that flips the zone and allows the use and then essentially Dick states to the planning board, you know, follow these guidelines we set out for you for this particular parcel? Um, or should the planning board be the gatekeeper? By, by making this a land development project, we've also incorporated, incorporated the precedence of approval statute for land development projects. And what that does is if someone was to come in with a project, um, even if it were to require a rezoning, the first step they would have to get would be approval from the planning board. Um, and if they needed a rezone down the line, it could be a conditional approval. Um, but the first step would be approval from the planning board. If they didn't get that, then the project would be done. Um, and from the people that we were discussing with, we all felt, and the Skullcos as well, we all felt that, um, that really was the better way to, um, to approach, um, not only solar developments, but it is the better way to approach solar developments, um, but also development in general. Uh, because, um, really the council should be setting the policy from thirty thousand feet up. You know, they'll, they'll set the policy townwide. Um, and then when it comes to the particulars of each project and whether it fits in, whether the place next to the neighbors and so on. We all felt that, um, that, uh, the planning board should be the gatekeeper when you're looking at a particular development. Now, I know there's been a lot of debate on that, I won't get into the, the legal merits of the debate because I'm not here to say one person was right and one was wrong. Um, so we just drafted the ordinance to clarify the issue and, um, uh, decide the debate in, in one way or the other. Um, and then just to quickly, uh, stop on the other points, we added a special use permit process, um, which allows, which requires these type of projects to, um, be reviewed by the zoning board in addition to the planning board. Uh, that, um, uh, it, um, gets, gets a second set of eyes on a project. Uh, we, we increased setbacks from residential properties. Um, again, addressing the same theme that we, we felt like these need to be separated from residential zones. Um, we, we put some additional language about buffers, about decommissioning reserve, which I know there was some debate around that, both in front of the council and the planning board. We put some language in there allowing, um, the planning board to protect scenic view sheds. Um, we, um, put in language, um, about, um, another point, we, we put in language about contaminated and compromised sites. Um, and that also fits the theme, even though it's a, it's encouraging solar, it's encouraging in areas that, that we felt was more appropriate, which is the type of area that an industrial use would, would go to, which would be a site that's already been contaminated or compromised so that it can't fit a use that has people coming in and out like a commercial use or a residential use. We had a provision for solar canopies, um, so that would be encouraging it over large parking lots, which we felt fit in with the industrial manufacturing theme that we were going for. Um, uh, and, um, there are a couple of smaller things, um, you know, small but important, you know, require approval of police department EMS and fire, uh, regarding a public safety preparedness and response plan. Um, you know, that, that's not a big burden on a developer for these type of projects, but it, it could end up being in the long run, uh, something that ultimately is a, a public, a boom, uh, public safety. We put some, um, provisions to limit the clearing of vegetation. Um, uh, and some provisions to protect prime farmland. Um, so that, those other things are some of the provisions that we kind of filled in to fit the theme. But the overall theme, I, I think the two most important parts are limit the solar farm use to a manufacturing use. Um, and, um, the precedence of approval for a solar project as a land development project, which would require the planning board first, um, before going to any other, um, board or to the council to seek further relief. And with that, I'd, I'd be happy to, uh, answer any question you, you have. Uh, we were preparing a, um, comparison sheet for you. We didn't get it in time this beating. Um, but, um, we hope to have that for you soon. And I, and with that, I just add, you know, reiterate that we're not looking to hold anybody's feet to the fire with these deadlines. So if, if at any point you need a, uh, waiver for us to, to extend a deadline, that is not an issue.
Thank you Attorney Squares. Um, uh, Council Gary, you have a quick question here?
A quick question. Hey Counselor, but forgive me, I forgot to say thank you for coming on tonight and I know it's crazy time with COVID and holidays and trying to get on every, every conference call or town council. Uh, my question is, have you ever written up anything like this proposal for any other town?
Uh, yes, uh, so this proposal was modeled on, um, an ordinance that we drafted for West Warwick. So our firm, I guess I'd introduce, we do a lot of municipal work, we, we represent a lot of, uh, other municipalities, do a lot of, um, land use and zoning, so that was the model. Um, I would also say that this was tweaked significantly from that.
Yeah.
And based on the discussions with, uh, citizen group and the other butters and, you know, what they saw as important.
In, in your, in your, yeah, I guess I would say in your lawyer, yes, forgive me. But do you have any background with solar or any kind of engineering, uh, degrees? Cause a lot of this, there's some, there's some key points in there, it looked like, to me, it looks like somewhere, an engineering side kind of threw in there, they're kind of throwing their, uh, balance too.
Yeah, um, so I, I, I don't have any of those other degrees, I, I'm, I'm just a lawyer. Um, Andy Tights, the other, um, one of the partners at our firm is a, a planner. Um, and, uh, you know, he, he was involved in representing the Skullcos on this, so, um, you know, if you wanted to get, uh, planner perspective from our firm, he is available, he's a, he's an AICP certified planner, but as for me, no, I'm, I'm just a lawyer.
Aye, thank you very much Counselor.
Counselor Hurst.
Can I ask you about the, uh, proposed table?
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, Scott Billhurst, uh, I do say, uh, you're, you're welcome for having me sponsor this, I think it's very important procedurally to let people bring their ideas to the table and it's, if it requires a council member to sponsor it, I think it's important for council people to be accommodating, uh, to, to public regardless of whatever their views are. One of the things I, one of the dilemmas, I think that we really have, uh, we recently had, and I know some people were unhappy with me, I, I voted for a place that was a former junkyard and, uh, quarry. Uh, but, uh, I noticed on the, uh, the table, it said contaminated site solar energy systems. And it was no, in every category of, of land use except, uh, uh, it was permitted in a manufacturing zone, so what would be your suggestion for, uh, the leadership of a town to deal with contaminated, uh, sites? Uh, if we, I read this correctly, you believe it shouldn't exist. Solar shouldn't be considered as an option in any other place other than a manufacturing zone, it should be even no in a commercial zone and any other, uh, zones. And the, the dilemma is, uh, what do you do with, uh, contaminated sites or sites that, uh, maybe the, the only thing you could really do is solar or some other, uh, purpose, uh, how would you address that?
So I, I certainly take the point, um, that, um, you know, you may have a zone that's a contaminated site. Um, it, but it's currently zoned in a zone that's not appropriate for a contaminated site. So let's say you have a residential zone, but if it's a superfund site, you're never gonna build houses on it, so I understand, I take the point, that, that's a good point. Um, the process that I, I would envision, um, would be, um, would be that, um, that they could ask for a zone change to the manufacturing site. And, and the way that would follow under this ordinance is that first you go to the planning board, you'd have to make your case in front of the planning board as a land development project. Um, and one of the factors they would say, say is, look, we do need a rezone on this, but this is an appropriate rezone because this is a contaminated site, you can't build a house on this. You can't, you can't have a commercial use on this because it's a contaminated site. Um, and so that way, uh, if, if the developer is being forthright and that's the right way to look at it, then the planning board would say, you know what, you're right, um, this is appropriate for a rezone. They'd give approval at the, the initial stage, which is the master plan stage. And that would be conditioned upon the council then rezoning the parcel. So once they did, got that from the planning board, that if they got an approval from the planning board, they'd go to the council and they'd ask for a rezone from whatever it is now to the manufacturing zone. I think the important difference between the current state of affairs and, and this ordinance is that they'd have to get that approval from the planning board first. Um, so I think that's just an, an extra layer of review to ensure that you're not just rezoning a site that's not appropriate for manufacturing to a manufacturing zone to fit the solar. But you're actually doing it because there's a reason that that site can't be appropriate for other, another type zone. Um, so in your example you gave, it's an, it's an old quarry site or something along those lines where it's been contaminated, it can't be used. I think there's a process, it's just a process that requires, um, approval from the planning board first and then it goes to the council if they get that approved.
Is it my correct assumption that you believe procedurally, and I've been generally supportive of the planning board and, on solar issues, uh, as my voting record indicates, with the Kamoli exception, uh, you believe that the town council can so-called overrule the planning board, uh, on, uh, these decisions? Do you think the town council retains that right or you believe that it ends with the planning board if it gets a negative opinion?
So, and I, I think, I, um, I think I made an argument, um, not for the Skullcos before the council on a, another project. Uh, the, I, I'd say when you're asking for a comprehensive plan amendment in addition to a, um, a zoning ordinance amendment, my reading of the statute is that that needs to begin with the planning board. And so, uh, you know, the phrasing of the statute is that if you're gonna amend your comprehensive plan, it says something along the lines of, um, the planning board has sole responsibility for preparing amendments to the comprehensive plan. So I know, a, and I'm not saying, I don't have a case on that, but that personally, the way I've looked at that, if you're asking for a comprehensive plan amendment, that needs to start with the, um, planning board. Um, now, I think it's a finer question, um, if, if, if you're asking for a land development project as opposed to development plan review. If it's a land development project, then I think it's, it's clear, there's a state statute that says precedence of approval, um, requires that, um, um, that you need to go to the planning board first and get approval and then go to the council. It's less clear if you only have a development plan review, which is a less rigorous review process. Um, I, I think there's both sides to that issue. I would come down on the side that it would go to the planning board first, I know you're solicitor. Um, uh, Mr. McAllister took a different side, but I don't think it's necessarily, necessarily to, it's necessary to resolve that debate about development plan review because if from our position and the position of the Skullcos and the people that they've been discussing this matter with, as a matter of policy, that's the better way to go on this.
I think, uh, Scott Billhurst again, I would just say as a member of the town council, I'm not a lawyer, though I was trained in political science that, and so I have some understanding of the law, but the thing is when you have lawyers that give you different opinions, you have a lawyer that represents you and is your prime legal advisor and then you have lawyers that give you different conflicting, it's just like going to a physician, you know, a doctor with the same type of education degrees will give you a different opinion, so a lot of times it depends upon who you wanna believe. And then, uh, then if it ever ends up in court, uh, then the judge, uh, has the final say, but, uh, you know, it's, uh, but, uh, this can be confusing, uh, because the lawyers don't agree, uh, on, uh, a very complex thing. Not to say the, the feelings in the community at large on this type of stuff, thank you.
Yeah, and, and I would, I would just tag on to that if I could, um, Mr. President, that uh, this ordinance isn't intended to relitigate that issue. Um, we just tried to incorporate into the ordinance and that way we wouldn't need to have, it wouldn't, the debate wouldn't come up again because instead of saying it's required by statute, the council would just be saying, this is the way we wanna do it by adopting an ordinance that says this is how. By adopting an ordinance that says this is how we're going to.
Yeah, can I ask you one final question? And I might have other questions, but. How many cities and towns in Rhode Island operate under the plan that's being proposed by you or suggested by you and your client? I'm just curious. I know you mentioned Wes Warwick earlier when you spoke. How many cities and towns? Are under this type of arrangement currently in Rhode Island?
So the, the ordinance, the ordinance was based, the model we used in West Warwick. We took, we took aspects from a number of different cities and towns, but. I, I would make a caveat that, that this is unique to Hopkinton. Because even though we started. With a base, you know, there was an ongoing discussion with a number of different. People that were interested in this issue. And so what ended up coming out of it. Is tailored to Hopkinton and particularly to the issues that, that they saw as important. In dealing with these issues in Hopkinton. So it's similar to, to a lot of, a couple of different ordinances, a number of different ordinances, but it is. Tailored to Hopkinton and unique.
Thank you.
I thank you.
I have some hands raised here. I'm just going to go to, to some of these. Go ahead, Eric.
Hi, Eric Bibler here. Thanks for recognizing me. I'd just like to echo, first of all, some of Peter's thoughts. I want to thank the town council. For hearing this ordinance and I particularly want to thank Scott Billhurst. For recognizing that it's in the best interests of the town. To devote some time to this and for facilitating the process by proposing it, you know, and we all realize that. He's not endorsing anything so complex as a first draft of a solar ordinance. I'd like to thank the other, members of the other. Boards and committees in town that are, that are here and also members of the public that are taking an interest in this subject. I think the best thing that I can add, you know, at this point is that. This proposed ordinance is, is the culmination. Of a conversation that has been going on for, I'd say well over two years. There are many residents. Who have been discussing our existing PSES ordinance. And improvements that they would have liked to have made dating back to. You know, a period of time prior to its approval, really. And if you think back, any of you that were involved to two years ago, by the time members of the public got involved in this discussion. The. I, I think the discussions on the old PSES began in April 2018. So by last, by the fall of 2018. You know, it was an amendment to an existing ordinance. It had a framework. It had a certain logic to it. You know, a lot of people would have liked to have done it differently, but there was absolutely zero prospect of getting that done. So this conversation has been going on with many residents, including the Sculcos, you know, for two years now. And I'd say this project of this idea of offering, you know, offering. A new sort of model ordinance to the town council really gained momentum in June when. When some council members announced that they would not be running for reelection. And we had eight candidates, you know, pull nomination papers to run. Really, the timing was a function of the fact that it was clearly understood that the. Some members of the old town council would have, would, would have been and in fact were. Very hostile even to Scott, you know, for proposing this. I think in September or October, you know, for a hearing. So, um. A lot of thought has gone into this. As some people may know, you know, Chris Kearns of the Department of Energy. Rhode Island Department of Energy has been down to Hopkinton a couple of three times. For informational meetings and the Department of Energy. Completed a project where they reviewed all of the solar ordinances. In the state of Rhode Island, and then they made them available, links to these ordinances and actually summaries of the. Major provisions of these ordinances available on the Department of Energy's website. So one of the things that occurred, you know, in the process of. Trying to create a draft that might be an improvement, you know, over what we had. Was a thorough review of solar ordinances from towns all over Rhode Island, not just Warwick. But on places like Exeter and Coventry and, you know, you know, other places that it sort of had their feet held to the fire with solar development. It also involved a very careful review of the existing PSES ordinance. The, the Sculcos, you know, agreed to underwrite the expense of drafting the ordinance, which was really a wonderful contribution. I believe to the town. And several people read drafts and offered comments. This was an informal group. There was nothing formal about it. But the, their main contribution was to understand thoroughly. The existing PSES ordinance. And to understand the parts of that ordinance that. Had been debated at length and that we felt that members of the council and the planning board would want to retain. So, you know, there are. There are provisions in this ordinance, many provisions that are retained from our existing ordinance. And the idea here was to make improvements where possible and to, you know, address areas where. You know, that were entirely omitted or inadequately addressed. The other thing is that residents here in Hopkinton. Who have gone to, I dare say dozens of hearings or meetings of the planning board and the town council. Have seen. Have, have had direct experience with, with places where our existing ordinance is weak. Or indistinct, or the interpretation of the ordinance has lent itself, it has been sort of a gray area. And we have watched. Developers exploit these weaknesses. So we want to, we want to cure those. Okay. I want to tell the town council that. You know, I've been drafting a letter to the town council, which I'd hoped to complete by today, but. I just, I just didn't manage to, to get it done by today, and perhaps it's just as well. To cover. You know, to sort of itemize some of these specific issues and highlight them. But another purpose of my letter to this council is to summarize the, the history. Not only of this solar ordinance, but the one that preceded it. The solar ordinance we have now was tweaked from, you know, from its predecessor that was enacted about. I don't know, to, well, began discussing it about two years prior to that. I do not believe that there's a single member of the sitting town council that was on the council. When that original solar ordinance was drafted, and I believe there's only one member of the planning board. I'm not going to belabor the point, but I'm going to just give you a heads up that I, I, I hope that you'll. Take some, it's, it's important to understand the history of that. I'd just like to highlight a few things in the proposed ordinance that I consider to be. Improvements in addition to some of the things that Peter cited. As he noted. The proposed ordinance, we believe improves the landscape buffers. That are required in terms of things like size of plantings and. Potential requirement of understory plantings as needed and so forth. It also provides that these landscape buffers have to be maintained in good condition over the life of the project. These are, these are 30-year projects or longer. And, you know, previous provisions in ordinances all over Rhode Island basically allowed the developer to stick something in the ground. Guarantee it for one year. It withered and died and we'd be looking at a cyclone fence for the next 29 years. So this is something that, the kind of thing that might not jump out, but it's important. There's been, there was a huge debate over decommissioning on numbers of these projects. And our ordinance does not require that the decommissioning reserve that needs to be posted by. By developer be predicated on the assumption that at the end of life. Every panel that is removed will have to be recycled at an appropriate recycling cost. As we've said in prior meetings, the global and United States regulatory regimes are, are heading rapidly in the direction of. Prohibiting burying these things in landfills. There isn't enough room for them all anyway. They're ultimately going to have to be recycled 25 and 30 years from now. And that's a considerable expense. So we don't want to get caught short on the decommissioning reserve. That's a huge liability to the town. And also I might add to a farmer, you know, who owns land and leases it to a solar operator. And. So we, and we want to settle the debate. We don't want to be wasting an hour of the planning board's time. You know, arguing over the size of the decommissioning reserve and how many panels get recycled. We've provided in this ordinance that the, all the utility connections to the grid shall be underground. Except where national grid requires above-ground connections. This is a huge improvement. I mean, you can drive anywhere in town, past any of these solar installations. And it just doesn't even matter what you do for landscape buffers and setbacks and everything. You're going to see a half a dozen. Horrible, ugly utility poles right at the access point. Where the road goes in and the, and the wires come out to connect to the grid. And all you have to do at any one of these installations is stand in the street, swivel your head around and notice, you know, there are neighbors to the left. Neighbors to the right, neighbors across the street, and then we all drive past these installations and we have to look at that. That's a severe blight on the rural character of the town that we're trying to preserve. This ordinance provides for, for large projects that abutters within 500 feet of the property that's being developed. It requires notice for people within 500 feet. 200 feet doesn't really begin to. You know, notice to abutters within 200 feet doesn't really begin to spread the word around the neighborhood about the impact. That is pending. That's important. This ordinance stipulates that no building permit may be issued without written confirmation from the town planner that all conditions of approval have been met. Right now, there used to be a provision like that in our ordinances. I believe for some reason it disappeared, although it's on the website. But, you know, in the newer versions of our ordinances, it's not, written confirmation is not required. We want to put it back in the solar ordinance because we have had instances, or at least the practice now. As it's been explained to me by the building official and the town planner. Is that the building permit can be issued based on a verbal okay, you know, from the town planner. That doesn't document anything and it's not, it's not a good practice. We have a requirement here that the owner notify the town and post names of new owners on the site within 30 days of. Of any change in ownership. And there's also a provision in here that prescribes a. Predetermined termination or end of life for the project. Subject to extension. Subject to extension by approval of the planning board. I think that's a great provision because, you know, we always talk about these projects like they're going to last 25 or 30 years. You know, but once you improve them and, you know, maybe you don't like the way they're being managed, you know, enforcement can really become an issue. There are enforcement provisions in here too, by the way.
Eric, just, just one second, Eric. I, I see Mrs. Sculco's hand up.
Okay.
I don't want to call you short, but I would like to hear from her if that's.
That, that's fine. And I just want, one thing I just want to mention, I'm going to be sending to the. To the town council also is a little bit more information on the Sculcos. It's, it's really hard to do them justice in a short period of time, but. You know, they, they are really a wonderful addition to our community, and I think everyone will see that when you learn more about them. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Mrs. Sculco, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Oh, good. Well, it's an honor to be here. I've been watching the meeting. I'm very impressed with. How you're listening and considering the proposal that my husband and I put forth. Our only intention is really to do what's best for the community. I think it's unique. Hopkinton is a very special place. I've been in Rhode Island. I, my family has been there for centuries. And our only intent is really to help make it, you know, to keep it like it, well, improve it, of course. But to maintain the beauty of, of the area. And I, I really, I'm very impressed with your council, your meeting and the proposal, of course, that we presented. And I hope you will find it helpful. And that's really our only intent. Because land, you know, as my mom used to say, not, you know, being an old Yankee. You know, you, you can't, you can't make more land. And if things come tough, you can always grow your own food. So I really want to thank you all for really listening to these proposals this evening. I think they're really, our intention is totally to be helpful. And that's, and I admire you. It's sort of like seeing America in, in its best. Where the town, listening to people who are volunteering their time and energy and. Their, you know, really their intelligence to really help do the best for their community. So I really want to reward you all and thank you all for listening. And it's a pleasure. I'm a native, like I said, and I'm proud. To be, I consider myself a Rhode Islander from day one, born in Westerly, Rhode Island, of course. And for generations and my family never left. I'm probably the only one that moved out. So I want to thank you all, really. I appreciate your work and your hard work and your thoughtfulness and listening to all of this tonight. And only, you know, I know you'll make the right choices and moving your community forward. So thank you again for doing this.
Thank you. Counselor Gary, did you have any, any more questions for Attorney Swears?
Yeah, thank you, attorney. When we looked over, I, we, I think all of us pretty much looked all over the. The proposal here. And I'm very, very, very concerned. About how it cuts out the farm viability ordinance. Could you step to that?
Sure, I, I can talk, I can talk to that. So that was. That ended up making it into the draft that, that we ended up proposing. It wasn't in the initial draft, but after some discussion with the community members. That there was a feeling that. There was a feeling that. Placement of solar on farms. Was introducing a manufacturing use into a non-manufacturing zone. But that being said. You know, I, I don't think that. I don't think that this, this project, this proposal, I'm sorry, this proposal rises and falls on that. Particular item. And if it was, and I'm sure that there are probably counterpoints to that. I know that preserving the rural character of a community often means. Helping the local farmers. And so, you know, if on balance. Listening to the farmers, but also listening to the other community members. You feel that the amendment to the farm viability ordinance is not appropriate. I think that, that's an easy, that's easily segregable from this. That could be easily be segregated from the rest of the ordinance. I, just, just adopting the amendment, but not adopting amendment to that specific section.
I appreciate, thank God, because when I'm reading into this, and the more and more I read into it, it's pretty much not necessarily just farms, but throughout the whole ordinance. If I reading this correct, there will never be any more ground mounted solar in the town of Hopkinson. Am I correct in that assumption?
So you could have ground mounted solar as a, as a principal use in a manufacturing zone. You could have accessory ground mounted solar in non-residential zones.
Okay. When we mean accessory, let's, let's step back to the farms. When we talk accessory, explain to me, explain to me how you envision that. If it's not going to be ground mounted on farms, how would you do accessories with farms?
So, you know, as it, as it, as the draft was submitted, it kind of, it didn't have the carve out for farms. So I'll be upfront that we did treat those the same as other areas of town. But if you wanted to have a provision, if you wanted to maintain a provision that, that allowed accessory uses for farmers, I think you could keep the ground mounted in that provision by just keeping the, by, by not adopting the amendments to the farm solar, farm viability ordinance. And, and I just go back and say, you know, I think Ms. Skolko hit on this and, and, you know, we're not saying that it's all an all or nothing proposition on this. We're just offering a draft for you to, to, to consider. And, you know, if some things work and other things don't, be more than happy to, to, to work with you or, or to have it tweaked or anything like that.
I just, just one more thing, and I appreciate being up, be honest with this. Because here's the thing, okay, you know, the farm viability ordinance was passed in 2016. It came down through United States Department of Agriculture. They came out and said, okay, here you go, states, here you go. And it just kind of trickled down through state to DM to DM that takes care of agriculture and down to town councils and it was written up. A lot of work went into this ordinance, the farm viability ordinance. And it's just some of these things in this ordinance that you're proposing kind of trampled on that. And for the longest time, okay, farms have suffered. This was kind of a, this was kind of a, kind of a way about of farms could take solar if they chose to and, you know, help pay the bills with taxes as everything was starting to decline. Milk prices, produce, dairy cattle, all that was starting. This is why the Department of Agriculture went ahead and brought this forward. Now, some of the farms, okay, your traditional, you would think of a farm, say, you know, lots of cows, barns, stuff like that. A lot of that stuff has kind of shifted the last couple, five, seven, eight, 10 years, okay? So a lot of people are like, well, we don't really want, you know, this. Let's start just doing vegetables because there's a big thing in agriculture now. And I'm sure you're aware of it, whether it be with agriculture, with organics, non-GMOs, all stuff. So you're starting to see a lot of farms, so you're starting to see a lot of farm stuff up that don't have outbuildings to put on accessories or places like that. You're seeing a lot of places that have hot houses or hoop houses if you want, row after row after row. Okay? So that's why I kind of bring that up into some of the questions about why we would take, why we would do away with ground mounted solar.
You know, I, I think that's a good point. And I, I think it, it all goes to the, the idea that, that, that farms are unique resources to towns. And, and sometimes you need to treat them a little uniquely, differently than the rest of the town. And I'd be upfront that this ordinance doesn't do that now. Easily accommodate that. But I, I'm from Cumberland and there are a number of, you know, farms in that town that, that are a huge asset to the town.
Yeah. I mean, I work in Cranston myself, not to get off subject. I work in Cranston myself, right off Stamp Farm, Stamp Farm Road up there by Situate Ave in Pippin Orchards. And you can see how, how Cranston pretty much got, you know, devastated with farms. But, you know, that's my feeling on it is, A, town council should protect farms because this was something that, like I said, the Farm Viability Act was something that was passed in 2016, which was a lot, a lot of work went into it. And I'm not advocating every farm should go out there and apply for solar tomorrow. I'm not advocating that. But that option should be there for the farms. Because you have some people that, just like anything else, some people are for solar, some, some people are not. But if that choice is there for the farm, that should be their choice. Counselor, I appreciate your time. Mr. President?
Thank you. I got some other stuff, but I know there's other councils.
Sure, Sharon, Bob, do you have any questions for Attorney Swears?
Yes. I wanted to ask about the accessory solar. We have spent, I've spent the last three years thinking about solar, but not really thinking about having it on my roof. And a canopy over a parking lot, I don't think we have that many parking lots. But my husband has been interested in, and I have seen this when I've been doing my canvassing. There's, I, I call it, it looks like a Christmas tree. It's a pole that stands, that's in, it stands, you know, vertical in the ground. And it has solar on, on either side of this pole, like a Christmas tree. Sort of looks like, almost like a triangle. For people to have in their yard if they wanted to do that. If, you know, we could make more conditions about how it's not seen by, by neighbors. But, and, and I have no problem with it only doing 100% of what you would use. But I don't want it on my roof. And, and I think there are a lot of people who might not want it on the roof, but they might be interested in having it, I call it a tree solar. I don't know, I don't know what, what the proper word is. But has, has, has anybody thought of that? If we're, if we're expanding this thing, we, we need to think about other things beyond. And, and it's, it's obviously if it's like, like a tree, it's not going to be that many panels on it. And it definitely would only be enough for the person's house. It just wouldn't be on their roof.
Yeah.
Is that a possibility?
You know, I, I think, I think it is. Just to be upfront about how the, how the, this ordinance kind of evolved. When we, when I originally drafted and sent it around for comments with the group that was taking a look at it, I originally drafted to allow for ground mounted accessory in residential zones. And, and some of the, my original thinking was that some of the restrictions that we place on accessory, you alluded to the only generating electricity to be used for the principal use. One, it was one of the restrictions. There's other dimensional and setback restrictions. My initial thought was if, if we placed those on, you could do a ground mounted accessory that wasn't too intrusive. But in discussing it with the group, ultimately it came back, well, that's fine, but we don't like the idea of ground mounted solar at all in a residential zone, just because they've. But, I mean, that, that's something that could be discussed. And if ultimately the council says, you know, I think it's okay to have ground mounted accessory. I think we have provisions in there to limit it. And I think you noted one of them, which was only limiting the production to what you use in your house.
Right, 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 right. I understand. I just, I'm just throwing it out there, just if we're talking about this, we might as well talk about all of it. The other question I had was, like, for example, I'll give you the page number maybe. Section 5.3.2 B1. So, let me see if I can find it. 5.3.2.
Sharon, what page is that?
Which is permitted uses. And B1, the review of major and minor solar energy systems shall be conducted according to the following procedures, which are summarized in the table below. And the last sentence in number one is, it's a big sentence. When minor land development project review for a minor solar energy system requires further relief from the zoning board or town council, requests for such relief shall follow the precedence of approval procedures set forth in 45-23-61 of the Rhode Island general laws, with the applicant first obtaining an advisory recommendation from the planning board as well as conditional planning board approval for the first approval stage for the proposed project. I understand all of that. And it says, then obtaining further relief from the zoning board or council. And the way you put that, that last part, it sounds like if they had, they needed, if they needed more relief, they would go to the zoning board even before they go to the council. It's not clear of which, which way they would go. Or would they go to the council and then the zoning board? I don't know which way they would go. And you do the same thing in, in the second, on the next page for a major system, I think.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out where does the council begin and end? Where does the zoning board begin and end?
So. Yeah, that, that's, that's a good point. That, that sentence actually is largely taken right out of 45-23-61. So the extent that it's kind of long and, and, you know, kind of confusingly written, I'd blame the General Assembly on that one.
But, but in practice, you've, you've, at this point, moved the council out of the process. At the beginning of it, you've taken it out. So you've got, they're going to go through the planning board. They're going to go through the planning board for a recommendation and for the first stage. And then, if they have any problems, then they're going to go to the zoning board. So where, and then it says or council. So where, where does the council come in? It sounds like they would go to the, right to the zoning board. Maybe they would never get to the council.
Right. So if it was current, that would be going back to the use. Well, if it was currently allowed in the zone by special use permit, then they would go to the zoning board for the special use permit. When it would go to the council in the scenario that I originally spoke with at the beginning, earlier in the meeting with Councilman Hurst, where he asked, well, you know, what if you have a contaminated site, but it's not zoned for an industrial type use? Then you would go to the council if you wanted a zone change for that parcel, which the zoning board couldn't do. But you would only get to the council if you convinced the planning board that, that this approved, that it's appropriate for approval conditioned on a, a zone change coming after the approval.
I get it, I get it. Okay. Those were the ones I have so far. I mean, you know, I, we could go page by page and I'd say, this is not in the, it's not, it's in the old one, but it's not in the new one. But I have actually found a lot that's from the old is in the new. So I'm, I'm, I'm not as concerned, I think, as I originally was. I mean, I do see, I, I took my time and I went through and I moved and wrote on your proposal, what your number is relative to what's in the old proposal. So I've found our, our current ordinance. So I know, I've found a lot that's in here from the old ordinance.
Yeah.
So I'm a lot concerned now about that.
And I would.
And I, and I do think, I do think that we, we really did want to have a farm viability ordinance to help the farmers. So I'm going to have to think about that.
Thank you, Sharon. Bob, did you have any questions, Bob Marvel?
Yes, a couple of questions. First of all, thank you, Attorney Swears, and thank you, Tom and Cynthia Skolko for, for sponsoring this and bringing this forward. I think this is going to prove to be a big help to the town. I have some questions and I'll start with maybe a comment, a point of clarification. It's a minor thing, but I think it's important for clarification. Throughout your proposed, your proposals, you reference the Town of Hopkinson subdivision and land development regulations. I think the actual title of that regulation is, is the other way around. It's land development and subdivision regulations. Unless I'm incorrect on that.
That may be a drafting error. That may be a drafting error. And if it is, we can fix that.
Okay. I have a question on the definition of accessory solar energy system. So the, that is defined in your definition, one that generates no more energy than 100% of the energy that is necessary to support principal uses of the parcel. Now, I understand the, the reason behind that. What I'm a little concerned about, maybe not concerned, but a little, not really sure of, is I know that a lot of the businesses that do roof mounted solar for residences, I think the business model basically is that all of the, the energy that is generated by those panels are fed to the, to the grid. And then the, the homeowner gets a flat rate, reduced rate or something like that. So that would in theory be more than 100%. And I wonder, I wondered how in these ordinances, in these definitions, we would apply that, that model to, to this? Would, would this be, would that be covered under, you know, minor land development? Or would it be something different? And should we define that separately?
So it, it wouldn't necessarily get to a minor land development if it was an accessory use. It would have to be of a scale. It would have to be of a, hold on, let me just refresh my memory on the definition of the minor land development.
I guess the, the short version of my question is if a, a homeowner wanted to put solar panels on their roof to reduce their own electric bill, what process are they supposed to follow in this? In your, in your estimation?
So. I, I think that I'm going to go back and correct myself. Because the minor, the minor land development project is a principal solar, I'm sorry, that's a principal solar use. Okay, if it's over 100%, that would require development plan review. But, you know, that there was some discussion on what's the appropriate restriction on accessory uses. And I think Councilman Davis kind of pointed out one item that could be tweaked. I, I think another item that could be tweak, tweaked in that definition that you referenced is where there's an and between entirely roof mounted or mounted on a solar canopy and generates no more than the 100. You could make that an, an or, so that if you have a roof and you can put solar on the roof and you meet the other dimensional requirements, so it's not exceeding, you know, going too close to the ridge line or it's within all the other dimensional requirements. You could make that an or, which would then allow those. requirements. You could make that an or, which would then allow those roof mounted or solar canopy accessories to, to create the above one hundred percent and still be considered accessory. So that is-
Okay.
That's a concern.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it doesn't have to be solved right now. I think that it's just something that we have to consider i- in, in that, that is a, um, a business that is, uh, rather large around here and, and growing, uh, you know, companies that, that will put solar, solar panels on residential roofs. Um, okay. The other question I had right now is, um, in the old ordinance, um, so, so most of this ordinance that you've proposed replaces section five dot three in its entirety. Um, and it, it has, as I, you know, I, I will specify that I've, I've read through it too. And it doesn't, there are a lot of provisions in the old ordinance that are, are still in here, uh, plus, um, you know, plus additional, um, clarifications and procedural things. But I did notice that, um, it seems to end, um, at the, in, in the, the, the old ordinance, there's the section E, uh, post PSES approval regulations. And then there's a, a bunch of subheadings, maintenance, abandonment, decommissioning. Uh, maybe they're covered, but it, it didn't seem to me that they were covered in as much detail. Um, was it, was it your intent to, um, to leave those out and to cover them in, in, in the, um, the ordinance sections that you have? Or, or was that, um, was that maybe not intended to, to be left out?
Um, so I, I think we, we, I, I think it's just a different structure, um, in that, um, we've divided the, uh, different approval processes based on the type of, uh, based on the type of use. And just going back to your previous point, and just to put it on the table for you to, as far as accessory, um, solar, we did put a special use permit for accessory solar. Um, that's something to consider whether you want to do that or not. It just requires, you know, a trip to the zoning board. Usually it takes about thirty days to get on there. Um, but you may want to have a special use permit for accessory solar, for canopies, ground mounted, um, but make an exception for roof mounted, so that all you need is a building permit and that you don't need to, to get a special use permit. That's just, so-
Okay.
Um, uh, to your second?
Yep.
To your second? I'm sorry.
When, when you get finished, I wanted to, to say something to Bob about what he asked. There are a couple of points of, of the E section that are, that are in his thing. E one and E three are in his, in the new one, just so you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
I must have missed that. Thank you.
I, I think, I think a lot of it goes to the organization where, um, we broke it down to use and set different approval processes. So when it got to, um, the, the maintenance and abandonment and decommissioning issues, those are really mostly tagged on to the, um, as part of the, the land development solar projects. Um, because that's really where they get to be the, the most appropriate. Um, so it's, I think it's just a little bit of a difference.
Okay.
Bob?
All right, thank you. Yes?
Okay. If you look at section, um, five, five, uh, point three, point four, um, and it's then you go to section B, and then number, number eight is E three, an itemized estimate of the cost of decommissioning. Okay, that's where that is. And if you look at the bottom of the page, section five point three point five conditions, A two, that's E one, provision of an onsite public safety response training with the police chief and-
Okay.
Okay, and EMS?
Yeah.
Okay, at least I found those two. I found those two.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, yes, thank you. Uh, sorry for that. I, I must have missed some of that stuff, but thank you.
That's quite all right. That's quite right.
I think that's all the questions I have, um, on this for now. Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Hurst, do you have a question?
I have a, a few comments, uh, uh, rather, just general comments and also, uh, some things on the, uh, the, uh, the body of the draft. I think one of the concerns is, uh, I sit here and I think of the future in nine sixty-seven and I've seen a lot of changes in my life, but the con- increased energy demands of the state and I just see a scenario that Washington County, uh, Western Rhode Island in particular, maybe in parts of Newport County that, and, and is the energy demand increases, there's gonna be more pressure for more so-called rural towns by Rhode Island standards to do something about energy production because obviously you can't have a whole bunch of solar in the city. It was very limited. And that's where the population is in Rhode Island, although it's moving south, I guess. Work and cranson equals a province in population. That's in my mind. But I also, uh, uh, and one of the problems that all the solar that concern people is that people, uh, large land owners are facing financial differen- difficulties. They're looking ways for tax relief. And, and the problem is, is that if you have housing developments, it costs over eighteen thousand dollars a child, uh, you know, non, a, a, a child that's not special needs. So what they would pay in property taxes doesn't cover that. So that's one of the, uh, pressures we have with people looking at solar. I'm not saying it's just the, the financial aspect of it, not the aesthetic a- aspect or any other thing. Uh, but I would like to suggest this, uh, and I'm going through this. Before we adopt this, I would think that we should have some input from the fire departments. Now, I know the fire departments are mentioned, they have to sign off on it, but they might wanna look it over and have some input before we, if we adopt something, we should contact, uh, the Ashway Fire District or the Ashway Volunteer Fire Association. They're the ones that actually fight the fires, uh, and the , uh, whole Valley Wyoming Fire Department and see if they have any input on this before we adopt something. Uh, just as a courtesy and, uh, it would be, uh, a way for us to establish some goodwill. Also, uh, I also noticed, uh, uh, the thing dealing with a tree warden, uh, you know, uh, trees are an expensive proposition, especially when you're dealing with removal and things of that nature. So I was, I was interested in, uh, what type of payment should be in, uh, considered for the tree warden if it, God's tree removal, uh, doing any of these projects with solar because as we know, if you follow the tree situation, Hopkins with dead trees is an expensive proposition. So if the tree warden gets involved and the tree warden does get a stipend or something, but it would seem that, uh, you might need some type of payment from, uh, a property owner dealing with that. I'm just putting that on, just going things, things that have come across my mind. And also, I, I would like to, Mr. Skokel to talk about, uh, before I get to that, I was also thinking about the Stubtown Road thing that we're gonna be doing or talking about covering that because we do have, like, dumps. We had the one, uh, the solar project on Depot Road was rejected. That's a, a former dump or a great part of that was a former, uh, well, landfill. All timers like me would call it a dump, but whatever. But, uh, that, that enters my mind. But, uh, I would like to, and I have one other thing after this one, but I noticed in the language of the ordinance, it said, uh, less than two percent. And the old, the ordinance we adopted, uh, in, uh, January twenty nineteen, we used the three percent. So I would like Mr. Skokel to talk about, uh, using the two percent, uh, percentage versus the three percent percentage. He could, please.
I could, I could address that, um, uh, and, um, uh, you know, I, I think that really came out of, um, one of the largest concerns, um, the group that discussed this draft, um, was, um, uh, the rezoning of, um, residential properties, um, to accommodate, um, the solar use. Um, I think that issue more than any other, um, really, um, they, they was really found to be objectionable and, and didn't fit with the, um, uh, uh, character of, of, of the town. Um, and, um, I, I'd also add to that, that, um, to Councilwoman Davis's point, um, you know, if you go through, you'll find a lot of provisions that, um, that are, are the same or similar to what was in the previous ordinance. And, and I would say that there were a number of people that held me to task on that and, and said, you know, we wanna make sure that there are good aspects to this ordinance that we think support our view that, um, solar should be a manufacturing use, uh, or solar farm should be a manufacturing use. We wanna keep those or we wanna strengthen them. Um, and so I think that was one of the provisions that they felt was a good provision. Um, and so the, the, the three percent. Um, and so they kept it and, and, you know, I think changing it from three to two, um, was only a way of saying, we, we really, we, we like this aspect of the prior ordinance. We don't, uh, we're not supported, supportive of, um, of rezoning, uh, residential, residentially zoned properties, um, to accommodate, um, a solar use. Um, so I think that's where that, that came from.
Okay, and, uh, my final one, I guess. Uh, I've kinda hogged the time today, although Councilor Gary's, uh, got quite a bit in. Uh, but, uh, uh, I got the, uh, well, the three percent, but I was looking at thirteen on page fourteen to nineteen. Uh, I was just wondering, it said, is a part of any approval that applicant at planning board should set a proposed date for decommissioning? Uh, and maybe it's already understood, so it wouldn't be necessary, but should we have something in there that deals with a lien on the property? We don't know, uh, if a corporation owns this, what their status is gonna be twenty or thirty years into the future. Should it be just a lien? And that entered my mind and maybe it's already understood, there'd be a lien, uh, on that property. I know you have a dis- decommissioning bond, but what happens if everything goes com- put? I mean, is it, should a lien be used or the decommissioning bond should, uh, cover everything and we shouldn't worry about a lien?
Uh, uh, actually, I, I, I think that's a great idea. Um, and, um, uh, frankly, you know, I, I think that's probably something that, um, when we drafted this, we, we missed because in other towns, I know, we've used that mechanism because you're right. You're talking about a time that's so far in the future. Um, yes, you have the bond to help with that. Um, but I think a lien is something that, that, that could be useful to, um, to include. And I, I think it, it would be a good thing to include right in that section and, um, put it up front. So I guess the answer is, I missed it in drafting it, but I, but I think that's a good idea.
Well, I, I really strongly, if I'm gonna vote for this thing, I'm, I'm gonna strongly on it because I think that if you're a member of the town council, you gotta be on the Hopkins team and you gotta be prescient. It's tough to be prescient because you don't think of these things. And I'm sixty-seven, so I don't, I hope I'm around in thirty years, but we'll see. Thank you.
Hey, Council, hey, Councilor, Councilor Gary here. Uh, very enthusiasm from, uh, my fellow counselor. Here's one thing that, that I kinda read through this and this is just maybe, maybe you could, could kinda guide us through it. Let's just say, let's just say, this is hypothetical question. Let's just say that's, uh, a business out there has, has solar in their backyard, okay? And all of a suddenly, the business goes bankrupt, but everything's up and running. Uh, wha- what is the, is, I guess it would say, is there some kind of ordinance? I know we had talked about being third, thirty years away is a long time and a lot could happen. Trust me, I know that. But is there something that we might wanna add to this in the event of, uh, say, a business who has solar goes under? Does the bank seize it? Who would be in control of, would they be in control of the property? Or would the solar company be in control of the property? There's kinda the, you know what I'm saying? That's why we've kind of tried to figure out exactly how that would clarify that.
So this is just, uh, just, uh, so I'm understanding the question correctly. Is this, uh, a commercial use other than solar, like a, a s- a store? Or is it, are we talking about an accessory, accessory solar use or, or a solar-
Yeah, accessory or that, yeah. Say, all of a suddenly, somebody opens up a business or a current business in this town and all of a suddenly, the business goes bankrupt, but it still has solar. How is it, how should we have, should we have something written in, into the ordinance on how to handle that? Cause I'm sure, you know, not the, not throw, not casting a dark hand or shadow. I'm sure this is something that not just necessarily this town council might see, but the next or somewhere down the road might see.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good point. Um, the, the way that, the way that I, I would think, or the way that this ordinance was intended to handle that type of situation would be to, uh, limit the size of the accessory solar. Um, so I think a key provision of that would be that, uh, that you're only generating the solar that you use on site. Um, so we didn't include the, the decommissioning bond for accessory solar, um, just because, um, if it's a small enough project, collecting a bond, it'd almost be the administrative cost of that would exceed the, the benefit that you get from it. Um, but, but I, I definitely could take the point that if you have a, a business that puts a, or a, you know, some type of use that puts a large accessory structure, uh, accessory solar, then you're, then you're almost in the same situation where you have a solar farm. And then you have to start thinking about, well, you know, what condition, who's, who should review it? Um, what condition you need to put on to prepare for the future? I think that, I think the better way to handle it personally and, and how we tried to handle it in the ordinance would be to, to limit the size so that accessory is, is only accessory. So it's only producing what's used on site. And if, um, the use goes out of business, um, whoever buys that building, um, they'd be buying the accessory solar with it. Or if it's goes into receivership, whoever the receiver sells it to would be buying that solar. And they wouldn't be buying a solar farm with potentially, you know, obsolete technology that, that that would be a, a big, um, liability to, to remove. Hopefully it would be just tailored in size, so it's really just a secondary smaller use to the, to the main use.
Hey, Councilor. Okay, I'm going to open it up to some questions, uh, to, uh, to some of these hands that are raised. Um, Lighthouse, you have been unmuted. Go ahead. If you're under the name of Lighthouse. Okay, next. Um, Chip, go ahead, Chip.
Hi. Um, so first of all, I, I think this workshop is a really good idea. Um, I'm really happy to see that, uh, everyone's participating and I'm really appreciative that the Skullcoats put this forward. Um, I actually have a, a lot of points. I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep track of all these things. First of all, I wanted to address something that Mr. Hurst said a while ago, um, with regard to, with regard to contaminated areas. Um, I understand his point, okay? You can't do anything else with a contaminated area, but that does not in and of itself mean that we have to do something with the contaminated area. So we do not need to put solar in a contaminated area, especially if it's in a residential area. So the first question that needs to be asked is where is that particular site that's being proposed for solar installation? Residential, commercial, it should be the first boxes we check. And then we start to look at it from contaminated area from that point. Because just because it's a contaminated area, it doesn't mean that it doesn't pollute the view shed or negatively- That it doesn't pollute the view shed or negatively impact. The budding residents next to the contaminated area. Okay, so. My only point with that is let's not just assume that just because it's contaminated, we can put something, we can put a manufacturing process there. Second. Just in general, we need to look at this as like a negotiation, right? So obviously, the first bid that's put forward is going to be. Low or high depending on where you stand on this. Okay, and it might be lower and or higher than we really expect that we're going to get. But the idea is that we can now all work to some agreeable point on that. And it doesn't really matter who presents a plan like this. It doesn't matter if they're, I mean, obviously, we want residents and taxpayers to be the ones presenting something like this. But I don't think we should really care if they're. On commission or anything like that, or any boards or anything in the town. If something like this is proposed, I think it deserves. The people's time to discuss it and consider it at the very least. Okay, now to move down my list of things. One of the first thing that jumps out to me on this, first of all, I think there's a lot of good stuff in here. And I think I spent a lot of time today reading the original farm viability ordinance. The amendment, the solar amendment to the farm viability. The original PSES ordinance as well, and then time, time reading this, this new one. And I think this is actually a very good start. But I will say there are things that. I, I think need improvement as well. But one of the first things that I noticed that jumps out at me. Is that addressing changes in our existing solar ordinance actually starts to pull some threads. On other ordinances, for example. Our farm, our current farm viability ordinance refers to some agricultural operations that according to Rhode Island general law. The Rhode Island Right to Farm Act that was created in two thousand and thirteen. Are not listed. So. We have things like arborist and logging. And firewood as a farm product and the Farm Viability Act. That actually do not fit in with the Rhode Island general law. Classification of approved agricultural operations. It does say forestry is an operation, but forestry and arborist and logging are completely different things and they're explicitly left out of the Rhode Island general law. So in my mind, a simple fix to this. Is that we actually. I don't mean to make this more complicated, but we, we add an amendment to our original farm viability law just to say. We are going to adhere to Rhode Island general law, Rhode Island Right to Farm Act. Approved agricultural operations. For activities considered under our farm viability law. Okay, so I think that's, you know, this is, we're going to run into these things, right? As we start, as we start to address some of these questions, we're going to find like. There's a lot of interconnectivity that we just can't avoid. That's the first thing. I, in my. Personally, I, I really like the idea of supporting our farms, our local farms. Okay, I think that's a really important thing. And actually, I knew right away that Mr. Gary was not going to like. The fact that a lot of this farm viability was removed. And I think there's a lot of people that aren't going to like that. And even for me, you know, I really. I've been very vocal about not liking. Residential rezoning off our eighty solar, everyone I think knows how I feel about that. However, I think we do need to understand that there are people that this is actually important to and that we actually need to be willing to consider. Circumstances. Okay, now. If people are going to look for farm viability exemption or whatever you want to call it in order to. Maintain or to. Consider solar on their farmland. I actually think there's some simple things that we can do to allow that. First of all, they have to fall within that. Their Rhode Island general law agriculture operations. Second, they need to show their IRS farm ten forty schedule F that indicates that they are actually a farm. I see Mr. Gary shaking his head to that.
You're caught on the, you're kind of on the right track, Cliff. Go ahead.
But with that, there is also a Rhode Island farm tax number that they should be able to show. Okay, like we want to, we do this for other things. There are tax exemptions, property tax exemptions for. Elderly community members. And I assume, and I'm sorry, I hadn't had a chance to look at that exemption or anything like that. But I assume we need to be able to, they must have to demonstrate the need, right? We're willing to provide assistance when applicable. All you have to do is demonstrate the need. And in my mind, I don't think that's an unreasonable thing to ask. So if we go a little bit further. I actually think that the farm viability. Is it, and this is just a discussion point, and I know it might not be taken well. But could we actually ask that the farm viability of proposers? Demonstrate that actually having the acre, the two acres or the three acres would in fact. Ensure that they could continue to be viable for some period of time? I mean, we must be able to look back at tax records and things like that. I, you know, I realize we don't want to make such a big ask that is going to financially. Tax these people because they're already in maybe a financially difficult situation. But my point is, is it too much to ask for? Documentation to say, hey, look. We, we could use some help here. You know, times are, it's a difficult, and we all understand. With, you know, these huge commercial farming industries that it is difficult for our local farmers to compete. Right? It's not just farms, it's all sorts of small business, right? It's very difficult. And so it seems to me that this should actually be a pretty simple thing to demonstrate. And it would just make, and now we can say, okay. The other part about that is, is some assurance, like, and this is, I don't mean to sound negative or jaded here. But if, if someone demonstrates even those things and then we allow the construction of solar on farm property. What happens if that farm just decides to stop being a farm within the next couple of years? But they can still continue to make their money on the solar. Right now, in that context, it actually defeats the whole purpose, right? It's intent is very, very difficult to demonstrate. And this is one of those really, and I'm all about reducing gray area. But I want to try to hold true to the intent of a farm viability ordinance. The intent is to ensure that our local farms can sustain themselves because. They provide a lot of benefits to our community. And, and also just to our history and our culture. This is a very important part of the culture in a rural community like Hopkinton. Okay?
Okay, Cliff, can I, can I, can I stop right there and answer back up and answer any questions?
Sure, of course.
One, I thank you. I appreciate you talking about farms. All right, so basically, this is how, this is how it goes, okay? Every year, a farmer is required to fill out paperwork from Town Hall, okay, stating, hey, yes, I'm a farm, okay? Then that goes from, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, on the, on the, on the. Chain of custody, it goes from Town Hall. It goes to state DM agriculture, then it goes off to that. Somewhere in the process, you need to show you've made over twenty-five hundred dollars a year in profit. Okay, and you're also required to drive, or you're also required to. Fill out a ten forty F for farm when it comes to that, okay? That pretty much keeps your farm is, it keeps you on a farm. When you chew, when you, when you do not do that. When, when the state gets around five, realizing that, hey. This farm hasn't said this, they send somebody else to find out whether you're a farmer or not.
But I mean, my only point bringing that up is, you know, let's, I. In general, I want things to be tightened up, right? Like if there are procedures that are in place. You know, it's, I don't think it's too much to ask people to just follow the procedures. Especially if that procedure is. Is a pathway for them to get. A, something like a solar installation on their property that is. Different or not necessarily directly in line with whatever the activity is. And this just isn't about farms as well. So that's all I'm saying is like, let's, you know. And, and, you know, I, I apologize if some of these things are already in place and I'm just not aware of them. But just as I'm, this is, this was me like reading through these documents today and just saying, oh, these are things that I think need to be done. All right, so if I move ahead now to more directly address. The amendment that's proposed here tonight, there's one thing that kept jumping out to me, and this was just a question. It keeps popping up that there's with, if, if required for. Six months or more of construction with regard to the large and intermediate. Solar arrays. I don't know, I, you know, I, from. I can assume that, you know, most of these big arrays are going to accept. Are going to require more than six months and therefore need to be bumped up to this higher level of review. But what I would say is, can we just cut that? Because the first thing that jumps into my mind is that people are going to look to shorten. Their construction time. Now, I know that's not easy, maybe it's not cost effective. But if I were looking to circumvent. You know, procedural. Standards. I would look to shorten my construction time. So that would be one thing I would suggest removing unless there is some other reason. Otherwise to do so. My next comment isn't necessarily, I didn't see anything that, or maybe I did, but it wasn't clear. But one thing that jumped out to me in the past few months with. This whole solar issue is that the planning board would make a decision. And on the times that it was a negative decision. In between, and so then that, it should have, in my opinion, should have never been bumped up to the town council. But when it did, when it often did. The developer actually presented a changed plan than, than was presented to the planning board. And now the original procedure is that. A developer never gets bumped up to the town council until a master plan is approved. Now, the circularity in this is that if the planning board never approves a zone change. Or an amendment to the zone. Then they never get the opportunity to see a master plan. So what should happen in that circumstance? Is that it just stays within the planning board loop. If you are not able to get master plan approval, which I know it sounds like a final approval, but it's not. It's master plan approval is actually the most basic approval. You cannot exit the loop of the planning board until that approval is in place. And that means that if the planning board doesn't actually approve zone change, you're kind of stuck. Because what's happening now, and then at that point. With that mass, if the master plan was approved, then that master plan would be kicked up to the town council. So and the town council would actually be reviewing the same documentation and the same plan that the planning board was reviewing. As it stands right now, the planning board sees one thing. And denies it or approves it. If it was approved, then the master plan would go. But when it's denied, then the developers have this opportunity to make changes. For which the planning board never even gets to see. And the town council is seeing that. And making a decision there. That just seems completely inconsistent. And we're actually negating all of the work that the planning board has done up to that point. Regardless of how you see their opinion, whether their opinion is just advisory or not. We should be using the planning board to cut out some of these steps. So that the town council isn't doing all of this legwork at the initial stages of this stuff. As a town council, you guys need to be using these boards and commissions because you've got a lot of other stuff to worry about. Right? Let the planning board do a lot of the work for you. And let's have these, let's have these procedures in place so that it never gets to you until some level of basic approval has already been passed by the planning board. Okay. I'm sorry, I'm just looking through my list here. One thing that I noticed in, and I'm sorry, I can't pull out the exact sections, but there is a requirement for. Maintenance of the property by the developers of these solar arrays. And it just jumped out to me that they didn't explicitly call out maintaining access roads. I think that's actually a really important thing, particularly if there's an emergency or anything like that. So we really need to make sure that we call out, keep access clear by whatever means necessary. Another thing that jumped out to me was in section five point three point seven, the max lot coverage. It said thirty percent in a non-residential area. That's a significant decrease from the currently seventy-five percent. I, you know, again, I referenced this at the beginning by saying, when you're negotiating, you start low or high. Lower or higher than you expect, that seems actually very significantly lower to me. What I would put into that, or just again, my opinion. I actually like the thirty percent if you have to do clearing. But if you don't have to clear the property, let them have the seventy-five percent of the lot coverage. It's already cleared, I don't care. But we need to start considering, and this actually gets to another point that I was saying. And this addresses another thing that Mr. Hurst brought up was the. Ever increasing need of energy resources in the state. One thing we really need to start considering is the role, the important. Very, very important role that our forests play in our communities. Not just in climate mitigation, temperature mitigation, but it actually plays a very significant role in groundwater filtration. And sequestration. Okay, so, and that's, and so this brings me back. I would say that if a commercial lot, I have, I, to me, you know, if someone wants to put solar, a commercial or industrial solar complex in a commercial lot. You know, I may not personally like it, but if it's, if it's within the rules, I think that's a place that we should consider. However. I do not think that we should be allowing them to completely clear cut existing forest to allow something like that. So I think that we should put some wording in there that says, okay, if it's already clear. Sure, take up seventy-five percent of the lot. If it's not clear. Thirty percent or some number that we can all agree on. Is, is an appropriate amount. And, you know, lastly. I thought it was an interesting, and again, Mr. Hurst brought this up, I thought it was an interesting decrease from. Three percent of three acres to two percent, two acres. Again. You know, start low and work your way up, but. In my mind, we've got bigger fish to fry. I'm, I'd be okay with three percent of three acres if we could resolve some of these other issues. And just remind everybody that this is, we should really be looking at this as a way that we can really. Improve this ordinance to. Protect the town. Ensure the town's safety. And also, in the end, if we can tighten up these ordinances, it makes the jobs of the planning board and the town council. Far easier because then we can just look at these documents and say. Yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, based on the ordinances and. And then we've heard a lot of this threat of litigation. Well, we need to do this, we're also going to get sued, or we need to do this. If we tighten up our ordinances. The lawyers can't sue, or they could try. But if we're following, if we've got this stuff documented, we're protecting ourselves. And that's. I think that's just another important thing to consider. That's all.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thanks, Cliff.
Moving forward, I just want to say. If you have questions or comments, let's just be courteous of, of the time that we're taking. Every comment and question is important and I'd like to hear them all. Thank you again, Cliff. If your number ends in nine, five, nine, three. Star six on mute.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Excellent.
Can no longer hear you.
Carolyn Light, forty-three Forest Glen Drive, Planning Board. I have a question for Mr. Scores. We need to. Ask him. He referred to his coalition of friends who helped him coordinate this ordinance. So I'd like us to get on the record. So I'd like us to get on the record who those people were who initiated that. Hello?
I could answer that if you like, Mr. President.
Please.
Um, um, the Skolko, I, I'm representing the Skolkos.
Right, and we, we, uh, we understand that the Skolkos are also the brothers to the Stonington Ridge project. So we haven't heard from them over the last couple of years until this project came up. I just wanted to put that out there. There's a lot of people out there scratching their heads about where this is coming from. And I just wanted to, I wanted to give you guys the opportunity to get that off the plate, uh, so that we can step over that discussion that's happening, happening around the, uh, perimeter of this ordinance recommendation.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to address that. Um, so I represent the Skolkos. Um, and, um, the, the caller did, um, mention that there is a solar project that, um, there's actually two solar projects that, that they have bought. Um, but putting that to the side, uh, that, that's what kind of started their interest in this.
Um, okay.
But, but ultimately, um, if you were to pass this ordinance, if there is, has been an application that's already been approved, um, they're vested for many changes that come after the, um, the application, um, has been accepted, been certified complete. So a- at the end of the day, um, you know, this, this isn't about going back in time and, and changing things that already happened. This is, is just about moving forward. Um, and, you know, I did mention that, um, that, um, uh, uh, that, uh, this ordinance was run through with a couple of different, uh, people in town that they'd been in contact with. Um, I think I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, but if I didn't, I'll, I'll mention it now. Hopkinson Citizens Alliance, um, and I believe it's, um, uh, Eric Bibler is the head of that. Um, so there are a couple of people in town that have been part of that organization. The Skolkos have been in contact with, um, so, uh, but at the end of the day, you know, it's, it's the ideas that you can take or leave. I think there was a commenter that, that that, um, and, and that, that, that's, that's my perspective on it. Um, you know, again, we're not trying to, um, uh, force you to accept the Skolkos ordinance. Um, you know, a- a- at the end of the day, it's, we're just suggesting, uh, uh, some policy considerations that, that they, um, that they felt was important and some of the may agree on. And, um, you know, for instance, the farm viability section has come up. You may take this, use it, tweak it, not use it, um, you know, that, that, that's, that's, um, that's up to you. All we asked is that you consider it. And I can tell just from this discussion tonight, um, that you have thoroughly reviewed it. Um, and you're considering it, and we, we appreciate that. So, thank you.
Okay, um, you know, just, just as a general F Y I, I am a palms up type of girl. And I think it's important that we be very candid about this. Rather than have some people around the perimeter sniffing around, so it looks like this might be coming from this direction. It's great to have the support of the Hopkinson Citizens Alliance for this. And they should be able to hang their hat on that. I'm sorry I have to pull this out of you to make that happen. Um, I am a fan of leaving the residential property owners alone. I think dictating to them what they can and cannot put into their properties is not appropriate. Um, if a homeowner required a support by renting a room to a renter so that they could pay their mortgage, we wouldn't object to that. I don't think we should object to a homeowner maybe running a small business out of their home or the homeowner maybe getting twenty-six dollars a year from the national grid because they have generated excess power to the grid. I believe we need to le- leave the residents alone. I think our town council has done a great job with the farm viability. There has been no rush to the threshold to have farmers put solar on their land. Uh, this has been going on for several years right now. And this is not the bulk of the pressure put on our community for solar approval projects. So I'd like to leave that alone. Um, I, I will comment to you that every day when I go to work, I drive by a house that has solar panels on the roof. They have an electric charging station in their driveway for their electric cars. And I smile every time I go by that. That is their business. And they're doing us a favor. I say, hats off, leave them alone. Um, I'd like to question going back to the initiation of solar projects in the community of Hockington. To my knowledge, every project that we've approved has required EMS training, fire training, et cetera. Have we done this ever? Do we ever get sign offs from the fire department or our EMS services? That they are prepared for this? Once it's done once, it doesn't need to be repeated ten times over. But from a planning board perspective, we have requirements for each and every solar project. And the town council has put requirements in place for each and every solar project. But there's never any follow through and documentation. Have these things been completed? So I question you. Once we have fifty acres of solar installed up and operating and a developer has actually committed to providing the training for our fire department and our EMS, where are we left? It doesn't change much. There should be some kind of a financial exchange to support the quit, the equipment that these institutions are going to need to support their efforts for fire management or EMS management, et cetera. Um, I am on board two hundred percent. Landowners, property owners should be signing these agreements. Because at the end of twenty years, fifteen years, fifty years, that land is going to be owned by somebody. And as has been mentioned earlier in our numerous occasions, these developers could exchange the deeds, the rights, uh, uh, money, um, for the residuals on the solar projects. And it's the town's responsibility to chase these people for compliance or non-compliance. I believe if we hold the landowners accountable for the projects that they're putting on the land, then we'll have a lot more compliance, we'll have a lot more attention to detail. And at the end of the day, the town of Hockington, twenty years, thirty years from now, will it be in much better shape to execute whatever management of a decommissioning, uh, program might be required? Um, and what else do I have? Uh, you know, construction of these projects in New England is, mm, it shouldn't be limited to a six-month period. Depending on the size of the project, it might be one acre for a farmer. It could be twenty-five, thirty, fifty acres for a commercial development. If you are going through the winter freezing season, you are going to have complications. I think our community needs to welcome the opportunity for this type of commercial development. And by handcuffing them with a restriction on the amount of time that they have to actually construct and flip the switch on a project means absolutely not, we're not going to do it. We have to allow for commercial development in our communities. We need the revenue, we need the neighbors, we need, uh, that passive development. And, uh, that's something I'm stuck on. I, I, I can't let go of that. Um, the other comment that I wanted to make is that it is ingrained in my blood that every application for anything in our community, not just a solar development project, any application needs to be vetted. We have to know that the applications are complete and valid. We need to know that the business entities that are applying for these projects have been vetted. We need to see the documentation from start to finish in the name of the applicant. I'd like to see the landowners on that. All of those things are going to contribute to well-grounded projects that are going to truly enable our community to grow responsibly. Without these things, we're lost. I honestly don't think I have anything else to contribute. I've gone through my little list of things. Hey, thanks team for listening to me and giving me the opportunity. I had, uh, technical challenges earlier when you called on me at the life house. I apologize for that. Uh, thank you very much. Goodbye.
Thank you, Carol. Um, next up is, uh, Carol DeRozers. Carol, just say your name and address, please.
Carol DeRozers, Pleasantview Drive. I just wanted to, um, comment that all of you, when you ran for office, stated that, you know, support rezoning residential for solar. Um, so, you know, while you may vote no on any future rezonings that may come to you, I think you really, you know, need to keep moving forward on putting in protections for us into the future when you may not be in office. Let's see, I guess I, I also, so the farm viability was a comment. I think there's two areas, the farm viability and the accessory units on homes that, you know, both need more time. With regards to the farm viability, it was, I was very glad to hear, uh, Mr. Geary talk about how every year, you know, you have to cert, recertify to the town, the state D E M agricultural. You have the ten forty F. But I think in today's world, our farm viability, um, ordinance around solar isn't tight enough. Um, what we're seeing is that we actually had, um, an application recently go through that fell under forestry versus farm. And it, it's going through the approval process or has been approved in the planning board. And if we, you know, so if, do we, do we really consider forestry as farms? And if so, we're talking about up to, you know, ninety-three plus properties in town that could potentially have solar. That's a lot of scattered solar around town. So I just think we need to look on maybe tightening up the farm viability to be true farms. Um, folks who really have the farm, um, tax, that just the, you know, the, the tax number, but, you know, that it shouldn't just rely on the ten forty F, um, that they really, we really need them to be part of, like you said, the Farm Act, et cetera. Um, let's see, so more work on accessory. I, I think everything else has been pretty covered by the time, um, my hand was answered, so I will close.
Hey, Carol.
Thank you, Carol. Up next, if your number ends in one, seven, zero, one. Go ahead.
Hi, this is, um, sure, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Um, this is Sherry Aronian, um, Diehill Road. Um, couple of, of points, um, want to thank everybody for the, the great comments and, um, you know, items that they're bringing to, you know, everybody's attention. Um, the first thing I wanted to mention was, you know, as we move through this document, um, when I read through it, um, I had a couple of suggestions and, you know, have, feel free for anybody to chime in, but I almost think we should, should tackle it in sections. Um, for example, you know, the way I see it, there's, there's four basic, um, solar proposals that could come to town. Um, the first one being rezones, you know, let's say from R F R eighty to, um, you know, currently it goes into the commercial zone, but the proposed ordinance has it going into manufacturing. Um, so we'll just call it rezones for, uh, you know, all intents and purposes. Um, the second would be by rights, you know, those currently in, you know, manufacturing. Um, third would be roof mounted, you know, things such as, you know, residence homes. Um, and the fourth would be, you know, farms, farm viability. So I just feel like if we, if we broke the discussions into the fort, you know, and discuss, you know, the, each one at a time, it might help, um, you know, how can I say it? Certain, each, each type of those four projects has certain criteria that they have to follow start to finish. Okay, so, you know, rezones move one way, roof mounted moves another, farm viability goes another. But yet all four of those definitely have pieces that over, overlap. So, um, whence those, you know, the individualities of each one of these types of projects are established, then all of the, um, you know, characteristics that are, you know, the same to all of them could be interfaced over. It's just a, just a thought and a suggestion on it. Um, now, the second point is, I know some people have brought up the six-month construction piece that is referenced on page six of nineteen, um, in the discussion under major systems. And, and I'm familiar with that because that piece was put in by a counselor, um, when we were doing the P S E S ordinance back in late twenty eighteen, um, December of twenty eighteen. And really the spirit of that wasn't so much, um, to make it a condition under major systems. I can see it's written that way and, and personally, I would like that changed. Um, that it's not necessarily the six-month construction that puts it into a major land development. It's the fact of, doesn't matter what type of project it, it was, the counselor put it in there, I believe, more to protect the residents, um, and, and make them, you know, known, make it known that there's going to be a project in your neighborhood that's going to be going on for quite a while. It wasn't meant to be a condition, um, to lump a certain project into a certain type of category. It was more like an F Y I, hey, there's a big project coming to town. It's going, you're within five hundred feet. We want to make you aware of this, um, type of thing. But I don't think the spirit of it was ever to make it, um, you know, speak to a major system. It could be any system, you know, if the land was particularly rough in a, um, by right section, it might apply there as well. Um, so I just wanted to clear that up a little bit. Um, the other part, um, cause I, cause I do remember that. The other, the last part is, um, my question, I'd like to ask it to attorney squares through, um, Steve Moffett, the chair, if I may, um, when we talk about rezones, I've always, um, you know, when, when I was part of this rewriting of the ordinance in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, and I participated in those town council workshops, um, I was pretty new to all of the language and the jargon. And I learned quite a bit, you know, going through that. And I always was a little bit confused when we took the by right ordinance of twenty sixteen. And in twenty eighteen and nineteen, we kind of rolled everything else into it with it. So what happened was, you know, the farm viability kind of got rolled into it. The rezones got rolled into it. And it always, I thought, read a little challenging and things could be misinterpreted. So when this ordinance that we're looking at tonight came up, I thought it was a great opportunity to maybe smooth out some of that. So my question is, is when there's rezones, you know, which is kind of my topic one of four, um, when we discuss these, shouldn't all rezones be classified as major land development projects from the onset? Um, basically from the minute it walks in the door. And, and I ask that because as I read the state definition of development plan review, development plan review is supposed to be for by right projects. And I know it's kind of a little bit of a chicken and the egg thing, which came first, the chicken or the egg. But when a developer or an applicant comes in to start a project, But when a developer or an applicant comes in to start a project, where they are at that moment should be the deciding factor on where they go, whether they make the fork in the road to major land development or they take the other fork, development plan review. Development plan review, as I understand it, is for by right projects and that the planning board can at their purview escalate to major land. But I've always been confused on how a rezone can start at development plan review when it's not in the right zone to start with. So my way of thinking is, is it correct that all rezones should start and finish as major land development projects from the onset?
Mr. President, I could answer that if you like.
Please do.
I agree with the caller on the point that a major land development project, a project is bumped up to a major land development project if it requires a waiver or an ordinance amendment because it's not a by right project at the time it gets its first stage of approval, which is the planning board master plan. And so we actually, even though that does come from state law, in our definition of the major solar energy system land development project, we did include that in there as a system, it's defined as a system that occupies 40,000 square feet of area or more, inclusive of inter-row and panel collector spacing, which requires waivers or ordinance amendments, which shall be reviewed for major land development. I agree with that point, and we actually incorporated that into definitional section of this.
Sheri, does that answer your question?
It does, it does. And it kind of also, you know, speaks to why I'm hopeful that as we move through these workshops that, you know, we can almost try to segregate a little bit because I do think, you know, my points three and four, which are roof-mounted and farm viability, those are, in my opinion, kind of like driving a Camry down the road. They're much easier, they're much more manageable. Once you do items one and two, which are rezones and by rights, that's like driving an RV down the road, a little harder to manage. When something goes wrong, it can go wrong big. And those are the two areas that we probably, you know, need to put in maybe more constraints or more, you know, just constraints that will protect the town financially. And, you know, to really help the boards, the town boards, the town employees, the applicants and the residents to really understand what is expected of each type of project because they are a little different, you know, there's definitely overlap. Overlap, you know, they all need decommissioning reserves, they all need fencing, they all need, you know, coverage and shading, not shading, fencing. So, you know, there's a lot of overlap, but there's also a lot of individuality with each one. So, yes, that did answer my question because, like I said, it's always been a little confusing to me. And I was glad to see that in this new ordinance that it had that separated out. Like I said, I do think it needs tweaking, especially the part about the 500 feet because that I don't think was meant to be in the prior, when it was written in the prior ordinance, I don't think it was meant to further define what a major system is. That was, you know, meant as a courtesy to the abutters. And I think that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheri. Thank you, Sheri. Next up, Emily, please.
Hi, this is Emily Schmshemia. I'm a planning board member. I certainly don't speak for the entire planning board, but I just wanted to remind you all on the council and folks participating in the workshop that the planning board did discuss this draft ordinance at a recent meeting, our November meeting. And I drafted and eventually made a motion that we support the exploration of this draft ordinance and elevate it to you all on the council to be able to initiate this workshop process. So thank you for doing that. Just to talk a little bit about the things that we mentioned in that motion that we recognize that this draft builds on the existing ordinance that applies lessons learned from the couple of years that we actually had to apply the 2019 ordinance and addresses many of the issues that we've struggled with as a planning board with that existing ordinance. And as a result, it makes it more likely that projects proposed under a new ordinance such as this one will be, at the start, more consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. So those are all really great things. And at that meeting, we thanked Attorney Squarts and we thanked the Scocos as well for bringing this forward. We really appreciate all of that work that was done to give us a great head start on rethinking this ordinance. I've been on the planning board for a little over a year at once, at first as an alternate member and then as a full member. And I am not happy about admitting that I've gotten increasingly cynical just in the past few months about these processes in town. And, you know, I'm viewing this, this process now, these review processes for solar projects as kind of an arms race. We have developers that are very well-funded coming to town and they're looking through our ordinances, pouring through our ordinances, looking for loopholes to exploit. And they bring new and interesting interpretations to us at the planning board every meeting that we have just a few seconds to respond to, a few seconds to digest and figure out how we're going to respond. So the more that we can put some really deep thought into a revised ordinance and try to foresee as many of those situations as we possibly can will really help us out at the planning board stage and give us all the tools we need to be able to reply and respond to these issues in a timely fashion. The one thing that jumped out at me that I will offer as a suggestion for this draft, and maybe it's perhaps addressed by elevating a lot of these projects to major land development, but just something that I'll follow up with you all on too, is a requirement for a completeness determination. So the applications being deemed complete before proceeding to the next step and putting some bounds around the timing for when materials for the application can be submitted would be really helpful to our process. Sometimes applicants have materials for their application trickling in and just having a set deadline so that before it even gets to the planning board, there's a complete mist determination made would be really helpful. Thanks. I look forward to working with you all on this.
Thank you, Emily.
Thanks, Emily, and thank you for what you do by sitting on the board.
Next up, if your number ends in 3467, star six to unmute yourself. If you have your hand raised, star six to unmute yourself and begin to speak.
Yes, this is Jim Lambfair, Town Planner. I heard the, I didn't hear my four digits mentioned by you, but I was prompted to unmute myself. So I'm assuming that it's me you want to speak.
Yes, you're up, Jim. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sure everyone knows that basically what's being proposed here right now is a repeal and replace. And I think, you know, with that in mind, I think it's very important that the town council clearly understands and reviews what is being presented, the tweaking that might be necessary going forward. I looked at it today fairly well and a number of things jutted out at me. Some of them were mentioned tonight with the accessory use, the farm viability being some of them. But as a technician, and again, I don't want to be judgmental as to, is our current ordinance fine? Is this better? I'm going to leave that to the town council to decide what is better. As a technician, I want to make sure that you're clear as to what's being presented to you. And I also want to be clear that I know how to apply this in the real world, in real time. And so if you, I'm basically a servant of the town of Hopkinton. I want to make sure my planning board is happy. I want to make sure my town council gets what it expects to get. So I think, I think this ordinance does deserve a little bit of additional tweaking. And one, I'll bring out one major find that I had today that I'd like Attorney Squarts to address in his rewrite or next draft, I should say. And I would expect this ordinance to be consistent with state law. And with that in mind, state law defines a minor land development plan as a development plan for a residential project as defined in the local regulations, provided that the development does not require waivers or modifications. All non-residential land development projects are considered major land development plans. So if I don't see how you can do a minor solar energy system, which is less than 40,000 square feet, I don't see how the planning board can review that as a minor land development project. So I'd like to, like to see you address that in your next iteration. Also, I'd just like to mention that there is nothing to prevent anyone from requesting a zone change of the town council. Whether that zone change is a text change as Mr. Squarts has presented to the town council or whether it is a map change to change zoning on a particular parcel. I mean, I don't, I'd like to hear Mr. Squarts enlighten me as to any law that prevents someone from going to the town council and requesting a zone change without having to go to the planning board for anything. All they want to do is just change the zone on their parcel. So again, this ordinance here, as it's created, would not prevent that from happening because it can't prevent that from happening. So I guess I'll just leave my comments at this juncture here, to be brief, and I'll reserve my other comments for later on in the process.
Thank you, Jim. Attorney Squarts, did you want to respond to any of that?
Yeah, I could respond to that briefly, Mr. President. So the first section I looked to of the general laws is 4523-61. And upfront, this was the statute that, you know, that was identified as the precedence of approval statute. And I think it's been the subject of some debate in town. And so subsection B of that provides that where an applicant requires both planning board approval and council approval for a zoning ordinance or a zoning map change, the applicant shall first obtain an advisory recommendation of the zone change from the planning board as well as conditional planning board approval for the first approval stage of the proposed project. So that's the, that's the sentence that was from state law that was also incorporated into the ordinance. And so the intent of that was to rely on that language in the precedence of approval statute to require, as I think the intent of that statute is that when a project requires both approval from a planning board and a zone change, that the project get vetted first by the planning board. And so that was the intent of incorporating that language into the ordinance. It's in the state law, and this was just to incorporate it and make sure that that was implemented. And the point being that when you are asked to rezone a parcel and it's in relation to a particular project, you see the project has been vetted first, it's been reviewed by the planning board and actually received the planning board approval for that first stage.
Thank you. Okay, Lighthouse, did you want to speak again or is that, is your hand just stuck up? Carolyn, is that you? Did you want to speak again? Your hands up. Okay, councilors, do you have any other follow-up questions for Attorney Squarts?
I'm satisfied.
Okay, so we have a, Lisa, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sharon.
Um, I, under the maximum lot coverage, I just looked at it, 5.3.7. I guess when I, when I looked at the zone map and it said that, which equates to A under 5.3.7, which says ground-mounted solar energy systems in residential zone districts is prohibited. I guess in my mind, I thought that they would never ask, that residential property, people would never ask for a rezone anymore. I, so I guess I don't like C. And I, but I also do want a exception for the subtown landfill because it right now is zoned residential and it's, if we're going to put a town solar on it eventually, it would have to be rezoned. But I really, I guess I thought, once you said that it was only going to be in a manufacturing zone, I wasn't thinking people were going to rezone anything anymore. I don't know why. But I guess I, I'd like to maybe say you can't. You can't do any rezoning from residential to manufacturing so that you could put solar on it. I think if it's not zoned manufacturing, when this, when, by the time this proposed ordinance is approved, that should be the end of it. I don't think we need any more residential rezones or even commercial rezones to manufacturing. And I don't know how to say that, but that's really where I am.
So Sharon, so you're looking for wording potentially to allow the town to potentially do solar on subtown, like what kind of a language would facilitate that?
Well, I think if you were in A, would you say A? You would say ground-mounted solar energy systems in residential zoning districts is prohibited with the exception of town-owned landfills, you know? And then the other thing is, right now, the farm viability variance, you put solar on it, but you still are considered residential. So that's kind of funky, but that's.
No, you're considering farm.
No.
Yeah, yeah, but farm is a residential, it's a, farm is, is in the, is the RFR 80, right? Residential farm.
Right.
So, I don't know how you work that, but maybe, maybe you just say ground-mounted solar energy systems in residential zoning districts is prohibited with the exception of town-owned landfills and, and the farms, under the farm's viability variance. And then take out C. That's just where I am.
Sharon, you know.
Think about it.
Counselor Geary, would you have a comment?
Sharon, you're on the right track. Forgive me for trying to correct you. But don't forget too, when you, you're a farm and you decide to use solar, that one acre, two acre, however many acres that are, that goes from residential and that goes right into manufacturing, which is a different.
No, it doesn't change. The zone doesn't change. That's for farms.
No, I disagree with that.
Jim, ask Jim Lambfair. Ask Jim Lambfair. Am I right, Jim?
Jim, go ahead.
Yes, Jim Lambfair, Town Planner. Sharon is correct. When you do it, most of our farms are zoned RFR 80. Matter of fact, that's the predominant zone throughout. Matter of fact, that's the predominant zone throughout town. So when a farm comes in for a solar project through the viability ordinance, the zone, underlying zone does not change on that parcel.
I thought, Mr. Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought if you, okay, the farm comes in, I get that. But you, when you take that one or two acres, you're turning that into manufacturing by putting solar there, yes?
No, Mike, the zone under those solar panels still is RFR 80. Well, what we're doing in that ordinance is we are allowing a farm in an RFR 80 zone to have a one or two acre solar array on top of it. So it's basically an exception.
Okay, thank you.
But that's a great point that Sharon brings up there. That's one of the things that I found too is that the, with respect to farms, there's a lot of work that needs to be done on this ordinance because it reads right now that ground mounted solar is prohibited in residential zones. So that's a, that's a conflict right there and a good point by Sharon.
Scott Billhurst again, and this is such a complex thing and whatever we do, we need to do it right. But before we do adopt something, I hope we do get input from the fire departments. I mentioned that earlier so that they don't come out and say after the fact, you included us in this, but you didn't ask us for our input. I think that's very important. But also, I sit here knowing about the Depot Road, that was a dump, it's in private hands, it's not a town dump. But nonetheless, was a town dump when I was very young. And it's a landfill covered up, owned by private, what happens to that property into the future? And I also sit here knowing about the situation of a great gravel pit in the Ashway area of Bethel. If you're, even the old timers don't call that Pot of Ashway, Bethel anymore, but near the Lutheran Church. But there was a big pit and they were going to grind stumps and wood in that. And the neighbors complained and a solar array was allowed in there. So I'm sitting here saying what happens into the future? Like abandoned gravel pits that have been exhausted is a mine. And also, what do we do with, you know, the Depot Road, which is privately owned, but nonetheless a dump? What happens to that into the future? So there's a lot of things that are going to my mind. I think people want us to do right by the town and I'm trying to, you know, keep an open mind, but a lot of questions enter my mind. And I think what people don't understand, and I like to reiterate what the town planner, Mr. Lamphier, said, is that anybody can make a proposal to the town council to change zoning. It's just the way it is. Townsfolk's not obliged to change it certainly. But they certainly can entertain that. And that's all I want to say, but this thing is pretty complex. A lot of good questions have come out of it and I just think we got to tread very lightly before whatever we do, we do on this. Because a lot of lessons have been learned on solar and also land development in the last few years particularly. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. One, one more. Go ahead, Eric. Eric, can you just state your name and address also and just be conscious of the time, please? Thank you.
Yeah, it's late. So it's Eric Bevler. I'm on Woodville Road. First of all, I just want to thank everyone again. I'm really, really happy that we're having this conversation. Things have actually moved, you know, quite a bit faster than I think many of us expected them to. It's too late to get into the details, but I think that the farm viability ordinance presents some really tricky problems. Just as a reminder, you know, Chip raised a point which had never occurred to me before, but it's an obvious one. You know, farms have to qualify year after year. And solar farms that last 30 years seems like forever, you know? So I think it's a great point to ask, you know, well, what happens to a residential property that has a solar installation that no longer qualifies as a farm? So that's an issue. And then there's a provision in the ordinance. And by the way, Mike, I would like to personally talk to you about some of these things, understand them better because I'm not a farmer, but I'm in the forestry program. Another thing is we were talking about liens, you know, against solar installations to help guarantee that the decommissioning aspect could be taken care of. That's going to be difficult on a farm because if someone has a house and a farm and a 15 acre farm, they probably got a mortgage with the bank, you know? So at best the town can have a second lien and I don't think we want to get in the way of someone being able to finance their house or sell their house, you know? So that's just an issue that, again, is kind of unique to farms and it's unique to the problem of putting these installations in residential areas. You know, as far as the whole manufacturing question, I mean, to me, the stipulating that, that it should be a manufacturing zone should be a no brainer because the Supreme Court, Rhode Island Supreme Court has, you know, issued precedent rulings that, and the Superior Court in Johnstown, in a case with Johnstown, has issued rulings that have effectively found that wind and solar power generation are manufacturing processes. So when you put up solar panels for commercial use to generate electricity for sale, they've ruled that you're manufacturing electricity and that's just, you know, it's not, it's not a shop. You know, it's not a store, it's not an office building, it's a manufacturing process. And I think that's the correct way to look at it. And that just, the last thing I wanted to say was just to, you know, to answer Carolyn Light's questions because I know the provenance of this, you know, draft is, was a little bit of a mystery. You know, I started thinking about this personally a very long time ago and started looking at other solar ordinances and trying to see if I could offer some suggestions to the town council or offer some kind of draft. And I rapidly concluded that that was going to be impossible. You know, if you, if you're not a lawyer, you were never going to get that right. And, you know, this led to, you know, further conversations among, you know, a few people, you know, and the Scocos and having them underwrite the process of having a lawyer do it. When Peter's firm, you know, came back with a draft after Cynthia and Tom very graciously agreed, you know, to help support this project, the draft that Peter came back with, you know, didn't look like anything that I expected or would have tried to do myself. It was far better and, you know, everything was integrated. And the only reason we didn't, it wasn't, it wasn't Hopkinton Citizens Alliance formally that took this on as a project. We just circulated the draft to, I don't know, maybe as many as 10 or 12 people because we were just trying to deliver to the town council, you know, a product, a draft is our departure point that represented, you know, something that was as good as we could try to make it. And then we also realized that only the town council can pass ordinances. Different people have different preferences. The planning board and town council and members of the public were going to have good ideas for improvement or things they didn't like. So just going back to what I said at the top, we're really glad to be having this conversation. We wanted to have the conversation. You know, if the town council, you know, continues with these deliberations and tries to hash something out, you know, at this point, you know, you've scheduled hearings and you're having these workshops and this is all to your credit. And it's really your project. I mean, nothing gets past the town council and is enacted until you like it. So, you know, it's, it's really yours. You know, this is, this is an offering. This isn't something that anyone's doing to you. This is something a group of citizens tried to do for our town as a point of departure. So just want to leave it on that note from our side.
I think he may have left the conversation.
Attorney Squirtz?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was having trouble hearing the comment. But if that was asking for a remark from me, I would just say, thank you for the thorough review and consideration of this, this ordinance. And that's all, at the end of the day, that's all we could really ask for and we definitely got it. And I'm sure whatever comes out of this process will, will be in the best interest of the town of Hopkinton. So thank you and thank you for taking the time to speak with us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Attorney.
Okay, so I still think, you know, after this hearing, everyone's asked their question. And I'm sure there can be more questions. I'm sure, you know, Councilor Gary's going to go home and read, you know, read some more.
You've got to be closer to, to the mic.
I'm sorry, Sharon. Yeah, no, I just want to set, set up another meeting for, for the discussion. I know the planning board is, there's some members asked that I did not have this conversation. And I'm sure the real debate will come.
It's still breaking up, but.
We can't hear.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I apologize, my, my mic was off. No, I would like to continue this conversation. I think there's a lot more, you know, that, that we need to, to hit upon. So I would like to set up, and I think we already have a tentative workshop set for December 28th. Is that correct, Lisa?
That is correct.
Okay, well, with no further comments or anything, I would, Scott?
Yeah, I just want to, since I would like Lisa to send a copy to the fire departments of Hope Valley, Wyoming and Ashway and ask them if they have any comments before we adopt something. I know they're mentioned in the ordinance, their role, but since they might have something to say with roofs because it involves firefighting and that type of stuff, at least give them the chance to comment and they might not have any comments, but I think it would be a good gesture. So I respectfully request that they be asked for their input. The fire chiefs of Ashway and Hope Valley, Wyoming Fire District.
Thank you very much, Councilor Hurst. Just hold on one second. Chip, did you have one last thing to say?
Yeah, I, just a practical question. As residents, what, what would, what do you need from us? Should we go through this and make comments on the document? Or would you prefer that we just handled it like we did tonight where we, you know, went through a list of concerns or something like that?
Well, I would like to ask Attorney Squirtz if he would accept any written questions from any, from any residents.
Absolutely. So if the clerk wants to forward a written question to the residents, happy to give answers to them.
Okay, thank you very much.
And the other thing is, is Attorney Squirtz said that he was going to do some kind of comparison. So maybe we could have that by the next meeting on the 28th.
Yeah, I'm going to try to get that to you for the 28th and it was, we tried to get it tonight, but it was just ended up taking.
That's fine. Okay.
Can you still hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, so just to be clear, so if we have any, if we work through this and have comments, we should send them to the town clerk, is that correct?
Yes, correct. Yeah, if you want to send her to the clerk and she could forward them to Attorney Squirtz. That way, you know, you don't have to, you know, wait until, you know, the 28th to get anything answered.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, did you have the last comment?
Well, I'm done. Said plenty. Thank you.
Okay, I just saw that your hand was up.
Oh, that's a mistake.
As a courtesy, yeah, just double checking. All right. So with no other comments, I would like to, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. President, I move that we adjourn this workshop meeting of the Hopkins Town Council.
Do I have a second?
Second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Muffin aye.
Scott Billhurst, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, all.
Good night.